This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning.
Deputy here, it's okay.
Morning, Brian.
Morning.
How are you doing?
We're going to call a meeting order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First order of business, where is approval of the agenda, sir. Bruce.
Mr. Chairman, we just know during under general business, I've indicated that the public hearing for county budget was September 2nd. Twenty twenty-three, obviously that should be twenty twenty-five, other than that there's no changes.
Move to approve the agenda as corrected.
Second. Okay, motion by Jennings, seconded by Tissdale to approve the agenda as corrected. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any conflicts today?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, we need approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 2nd.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion of sleep, seconded by Jennings for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Bills. I've had my questions answered.
Mine too.
Motion for bills.
Second.
Motion by Flanagan, seconded by Tissdale to approve the payment of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, personnel. Let's turn it down. You've got a payday change that are also.
Okay, we'll start with the treasures office. Four, I have one classification change for Lawrence County going to county employee two, grade one, base pay of twenty-three ninety-two. Effective ten-six. And Shannon would be a special asset. I'm going to, this is a separate, going to county employee two, grade three, base pay of twenty-four ninety-one, effective ten-six. Rachel Baird going to county employee one, grade two, twenty-two seventy-nine, ten-six. And Megan Schmidt going to what separates for county employee four, grade two, base pay of twenty-eight four on ten-six.
Motion approved, persons office request.
Second. Okay, motion by Tissdale, seconded by Flanagan for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Sheriff's office, having new hires, Stefan Mueller via special deputy two, grade one, base pay of twenty-six eighteen. And that is a little different than what's on your sheet. It's instead of saying special deputy two, they've got grade two, but it's just special deputy two and it's just a grade one at twenty-six eighteen. This is a part-time fill-in employee, affected on nine twenty-three.
Move to approve. Correction.
Second. Okay, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Tissdale. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And then I have two more new hires, Alexis, Alexis Richards, correction officer one, grade one, base pay of twenty-four oh eight, also effective today. And Joe Cooper, correction officer one, grade one, base pay of twenty-four oh eight, also a part-time fill-in, also effective today.
Those are both part-time fill-ins, correct?
Correct.
Most approve.
Good question by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, the last thing I have for personnel is, as you've seen my letter, the first payday of twenty twenty-six falls on January first, which is a holiday. And thank you to Mr. Diaz for remembering that that wasn't the personnel manual that we actually get paid the day before. Well, if we pay the day before, it comes out of the twenty twenty-five budget, which would make that budget come in the short pole. So I'm requesting waiver to the personnel manual to allow me to pay on January second of twenty twenty-six instead of the day before. So let it come out of the short budget.
Because we will have had twenty-six paydays in.
Correct.
This happens every seven years?
Every, about every nine to ten years it happens where you have twenty-seven pay periods in a calendar year. So this is happening.
Okay, motion by Jennings for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for, again, thank you Greg, for having me sex.
Good catch.
We have travel requests.
All right, so travel request, this is kind of ritual active for Mr. Bowen, our veteran service officer. He went on a trip, he left September eighth and came back on September twelfth. And I just need approval to approve the travel request. And he has signed the travel and joint agreement as well.
I still gratify it. It's his man, it's great string.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by Tissdale, seconded by Flanagan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
What is your account with Fraser, Ms. Fraser?
Head of office thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, total amount of deposits in the banks, it's twenty-two million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents. Included in that balance is our bank balance of twenty-one million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Money market of one million, ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Total amount of actual cash is one thousand, three hundred and fifty. Full amount of drafts and checks or checks and drafts in the treasurer's possession not exceeding three days is seventy-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And then the cash, nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-two cents. Petty cash, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for a total of twenty-two million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Was it approved without or is it accounted for?
Okay, motion of sleep, seconded by Jennings for approval of the honor just called with Fraser. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty of resolution setting the twenty twenty-six counties on. We already had the public hearing, so that's closed.
I just have one item. First, thank you for allowing me the time to be able to review all my figures before we actually approved the resolution. I did, as I ate awake on one evening, thought to myself, I need to check the VSO's health insurance. Because when I did, the budget, it was just a new hire, we weren't sure who it was, what his health insurance. He took a different tier than what I had budgeted, I budgeted it just for singles, so I had something budgeted, but he did the employee spouse, which is the amount of six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars extra. And so we can either approve it as, or we can, I can make that adjustment and note that in the minutes that I added that. Or, and then do a supplement next year towards the latter part of the year if we need to.
Bruce, then, please.
If you approve it as is, then you would need to do a supplement next year. And the amount as is, is the amount that we'll discuss in the public hearing and so forth as well. This is a different.
Please.
Which would you prefer?
It doesn't, it either way works. I just need to know.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as is, and then with the understanding that we'll have to supplement that additional to end next year.
Okay, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Tissdale. Everyone understands the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, each commissioner is supposed to decide in your opinion.
Thank you.
All right. Automatic supplements to the budget, transfer of nineteen five, emergency management.
Yes, this is the Lawrence County Hazard Risk Mitigation Plan grant, and we received payment for that. And it's just asking permission to put that back into the budget. Because the actual plan was not budgeted for, and so this is basically just a plan being factored. So this budget is back to this whole amount.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Raffle.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, in your package, is information related to a raffle request submitted on the after grounds for fire department for raffle purchase in October eleventh? Health purchase, emergency vehicle, people getting promotions and not. Motion to.
Second. Okay, motion by Tissdale, seconded by Sleep, not to get, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carried.
County employee health fair scheduled for October seventh from seven AM to nine AM. I assume that's just for our faculty of going.
Yes.
At the former E O C A D.
Next door in basic.
Clear out.
General? Yes.
Sheriff D.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are quickly approaching the final final for our building. I think our punch list is down to somewhere between twelve and fifteen items, most of which they're actively working on. We've got a lot of compliments about the signage that has gone up. I think yesterday they were working on getting some of those signs lit up so they can be seen at night. And probably next to that would be, in terms of the biggest project remaining on the list is the replacement of a door. And that's to begin any day, and they're hoping to have that done by next Wednesday. So I think.
That's sure?
Yeah.
In the property?
Right. So we're making great progress, although sometimes it seems like these last few items are lingering, but we're very close. Additionally, although if you're watching the numbers closely as I do, you'll see that August, we're going to drop in our revenue a little bit. We understand the reasons for it, and it doesn't cause me any concern, although we dropped ever so slightly. We're still way ahead of our, of our projections for our business model, so I don't see any, any cause for any concern whatsoever at this time. Unless you have something for me.
Bruce, I was going to bring up, it's not necessarily related to the project, but because the sheriff's office is vacated over here, there's a hall between the sheriff's office and the courthouse. And Greg and Tim are working on getting a card access to secure one side of the door. And so you'll probably see a bill in the coming weeks for like thirty-nine hundred dollars or thirty-seven hundred dollars, which represents the cost of another card access, and keep that hallway secured twenty-four seven, as needed.
Bruce, sleep.
I was wondering, was the hazard sign part of the building, or was the budget separate?
It was all part of the building.
It was part of the building.
Yeah.
I didn't remember. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
You've still got some time, so John, if you want to come up, we'll get started on yours in the day twenty-five, we've got a public hearing. Seems like you always get tangled up in the middle of those.
It's okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have a couple of utility permits, and once again, these are from Celerity Internet. I think they're getting close to the end of their projects, looks like they have a few more roads to do, but on this, this go around, it's Kerwin Lane and Lookout Mountain Road. And this is to install fiber optic for communications for businesses and residents. Again, I also put down the same conditions to the permit and included is the bond for these two, which is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. And I would recommend that we continue on with this project.
Will you follow recommendation?
Motion by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings, will you follow recommendation? Highway superintendent, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Can you dispatch John from Principal Bank?
That's both of them are in there, and there's a sticker where you have to sign. And the next thing on my, my agenda here is the, our chip seal project. And we do have an issue with, with the contractor that was awarded the bid, they've missed their deadline for substantial completion. They didn't even get started, so, and we're beyond, you know, there's no doing it now, it's too late in the year, it's too cold at night. Chip seal would be a complete failure at this point.
Where was that supposed to be on?
This would have been on the ten miles of West fourteen, it would have been two and a half miles of the North Rochford Road and a half mile of the new pavement on Hannah.
They got charged for being late?
Oh yeah, they're right in the middle of their liquidated damages now, it's five hundred dollars a day. Their request is to continue this project for next year, which is going to be, you know, a budgetary problem, you know, I didn't budget for this for next year. In fact, I kept back on our chip ceiling for next year. But being that the money would not be being spent this year, and it rolls over into next year's budget, there, you know, possibility that if we do this work, that we'd have to do a supplement for the five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We're not going to spend the money this year, but.
Right, it's there, so. But what do you do on the charges of five hundred?
Well, their request is, their date that they request was on the fifteenth, if we charge them liquidated damages from the completion date of nine five to nine fifteen. So it's ten days of liquidated damage, five thousand dollars. And then we would, if we grant them the date, next year, a start date, which I would recommend a, an amendment to the contract with a new start date and new completion date. And then start charging them liquidated damages at that time again on the start date.
We just basically put a pause on it, but they're going to be working under penalty.
They'll be working under penalty from the day they start till the day they finish. That's with Aztec out of Minnesota. They had too many other projects, they, they had some overruns on some jobs in North Dakota is what they said. Got to tell you, it took a long time just to get them to answer the phone, but when they did, that was, that was the reason they gave us. I think I would rather go this route than rebidding this project.
Yeah, and I think they would guarantee to do it for the same price, right?
Their guarantee would be for the same price.
The alternative would be, is to try to go after their bond. And, and you know, that would be a process, and I don't know that there's any advantage to that. This seems to be, I guess, a reasonable solution, depending on what you think of the liquidated damage.
The project I'm guessing would be, you know, the engineer myself talked about this extensively, and you know, it's probably a ten to fourteen day project. So I mean, we'd be looking at, you know, ten to fourteen thousand dollars in liquidated damages, so not, not a large hit on them either, but you know, it is a reduction against in the overall price of the project.
Is the one stretch from McQuigge to the state line?
It would be all the way from highway eighty-five to the state line.
They've done work for us in the past, correct?
They have.
And generally, they've done good work.
They're, they're, they're a reputable company, they do fantastic work, they've never had an issue that way, it's, they just took on more work than they could do this year.
And it doesn't appear the road's.
Well, no, as far as the surface treatment of the road goes, I mean, it's kind of be relevant at this time, because even if we did try to do it now, it would be a failure.
Quick question.
Second.
You said that the liquidated damages that weren't in there on September fifteenth, I would be come up September.
That's the day they asked for the, that's the day they requested.
The day they finally asked.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Do you follow the highway superintendent's recommendation? Further discussion, Bruce?
Pursuant to the motion, if it's agreed to or passes, is the chairman then authorized to sign an amended agreement consistent with the conditions discussed here today? Would you like to come back later day?
I amend my motion.
End my second.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Flanagan to, for approval of. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm going to skip this next item with Mr. Limble here. We can come back to that maybe after your eight twenty-five. I just wanted to kind of also bring to your attention, the Elmore Road was, that bid letting was finally done on that by the state. The results of that, that bid letting were Grand Guard construction, nine hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, thirty-seven cents. Heavy Constructors was at nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, seventy-three cents. And Core Constructions bid was at one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-five cents. And the engineer's estimate for that project was nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, sixty-five cents. So getting a little forward progress on that project.
Now, was this part of that bundle, that federal?
This was a federal bundled grant, that's correct.
Like years ago.
I think we're on about year six or seven of this project. I think year six is where we are right now. I think completion date, like, there's no, I haven't heard any completion yet, I haven't seen any, anything in the, or a pre-construction meeting or anything. I would assume that's coming in the, in the near future, I don't, if it would be the spring or the fall, I'm not aware. But yeah, it's a federal grant, and if everything holds true, I mean, our, our liability to this is only five point three four percent. You know, that's all we have to pay at this, so anything over and above that's in the contract will be, will be responsible for a hundred percent. But there's nothing been indicated to me that there will be anything extra, so this bridge will be, although the federal grants take a while, it's still, you know, better, better for our, our account, you know, it's the cheapest way. But that's where we are with that, and I'll keep you updated when, when we know more about that and when that. There's no action to be taken, this is just for your information.
You repeat, so I thought I'd mention that.
Yeah, it's been going on a while. Grand Guard was, well, Grand Guard was the lowest bid, I have not received anything from, I have not received anything from federal highway or the state saying that, that they, they concurred with this, so. These, this is only the results I got from them.
Can we just place a stop and have our public hearing and get back to the remainder?
You betcha.
We'll do that, thank you for allowing us to. Okay. It is eight twenty-five. This is a public hearing, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, supplemental budget, impact and economic fund, severance tax, fifty thousand. The action, for its approval or denial, do you want to give us on board with that, Brendan, then we'll open up the public hearing?
This here is the request to supplement the, the impact and kind of fund by the fifty thousand that was approved by the board at the last meeting to, to the city of Lee, for the power.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak to this? If so, we would ask that you would please state your name and address for the record. Anyone in the room? Seeing anyone, about online, is there anyone online that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one regarding severance tax monies to the city.
Motion by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings, further discussion, Bruce?
I had an education yesterday, I understand, and I think that the actual ask will be less than the fifty thousand. Sounds like there might be some in-kind matching going on, and so I, it will, obviously can't exceed the fifty thousand, but I think it'll be, it'll be less ultimately. I think the plan would be is that when the work is ultimately done and the final amount is known, they'll submit it for reimbursement, if that makes sense to everybody.
Okay.
Well, according to papers, they did pretty good.
Okay, all those who picked a question, why didn't, why don't we wait until we know what the bill is before we do the supplement?
Even if you do supplement, I just supplemented the full amount up to that, it still stays within the severance tax fund. So if you do submit, it still, revenue stays in that fund, it just, if the bill would come in at fifty thousand, I don't have to come in and do another supplement. I don't have to come in and do another supplement. Basically, yeah, just giving me budget authority.
We already, we already allotted it by, by motion, but now it's, now it's.
Anything proven? Seeing none, all those in favor of a motion, say aye. Close, motion carried. All right, John. Evening continues, sir.
Got one quick thing here before I start in on this Maitland Road deal, I did get a, our final billing for the paving project this year, and I don't quite understand it, and I've reached out to the engineer and I, I'm reluctant to have you sign this change order. It came at, with the final billing, and it's the, it's a change order at our benefit, it, it was a, a reduction in tonnage, uh, so we ended up with a savings on that project of, uh, I think it was thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-six cents, which has happened in the past more than once, I mean, if it's, if the bill comes in less, it's, it's just, it's just less, but they requested a change order signature, and I reached out to them yesterday to find out why it was required at this time, we've never done that in the past. I would really leave it up to you guys, if you wanna sign it, that's fine, I, I don't, it's in our benefit, but, uh, I don't. Yeah, the work's been, been completed by, yes, and I, I don't really wanna start down a path where we get change orders after projects are done, you know, I'd rather see change orders ahead of time. In this case, the change order's in our benefit, but, I don't really understand why we need a signature, I guess, is my, my question.
Two things occurred to me, so it's not on the agenda, although it's for our benefit. I kind of understand why they would do it that way formally to reflect that the total price, so it sort of makes sense to me. I don't know, but my logic is the same as theirs, uh, so the next commission meeting isn't until October fourteenth, is this something that could wait?
It can, the, it's already been paid, you know, there.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a paper, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it can wait, absolutely can wait. All right. Thank you for that. So Brad Limbo is, and he's with us today, he's, he's interested in developing approximately seventy-five acres of property located on the west side of the Maitland Road. Um, this is on the north, north side of Christianson Drive. The proposal includes construction of three new approaches and removing one existing approach. This property is within city limits, um, and I've included some sketches, and I think he brought by some as well. I'm gonna let him speak to this a little bit, I think he's got a lot more information than I do. But we'll let him go and kind of explain what he's got going on, and we can talk about it after that.
All right, so we, I don't wanna take too much of your time, no, that's all right, so. Yeah, so there should be one that shows two cul-de-sacs on there, that's the most updated version. So what we're asking for is there's one existing approach there that services the existing home, it's on that seventy-six acres. We are in the process of working with the city to develop out, uh, residential lots on the right side in the meadow, so it, and, and, so what we're asking for is there's a shared, starting kind of at the top, there's a shared approach for two, two lots, um, that will be on the east side of, of False Bottom Creek. And that shared access point would, would be at legal access for those two lots that are sitting on that side of the creek. Then if you move a bit south of there, there's a main transmission line that runs across there, a large power transmission line. That's where we propose our new entrance for the subdivision. And the reason we put it underneath that power line is you can't build under the power line, so it's the best use of the land there. Just south of that is the existing driveway that goes across Lot fourteen, um, and services the existing home, and then further to the south, there's another approach. Um, that approach there would be the only approach on the seventy-six acres that is adjacent to Maitland Road and would also be the lower end of that larger track that's fifty acres. There is a section line easement on the, on the northwest of the property. So what we're asking for is approval of those three approaches, um, we would also like to keep our existing approach that's there at this time. And the reason for that is through, through construction, uh, putting in a new bridge, a bridge section on that new road. We're gonna need access across there, the other reason for that is my wife and I are, are subdividing out sixteen lots essentially. But we're planning on keeping, um, a couple of those lots on the south end, so lots, sorry, I'm gonna look at this. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we wanna keep. And the reason we wanna keep those lots is because we want our children to have a, a space to where they can build homes in the future, and right now they're in, they're freshmen in high school, the, the oldest other than we adopted one, um, who's twenty-one, so. It will be, so we're gonna be asking the city at some point for a deferment of construction for that second cul-de-sac. Because there's no reason for us, if we, if we can, if we can get the approval to do it, there's no reason to develop a roadway and maintain a roadway for a decade or more, um, so we're gonna ask that we can keep that other, um, approach, the other reason for that other approach is, that is the only approach across False Bottom Creek, um, other than the one we're creating. And it's been through several floods, it's a substantial structure. We're also putting some verbiage in our stuff with the city that says, basically, if it's damaged beyond substantial repair, that we would have to go back to the city and say, hey, can we either repair this, or do we need to move to that other piece, so. Um, it's a temporary, I mean, I say temporary to keep that other approach. I would like it to be a little longer than just temporary in, so I'm asking essentially for, for those three new approaches. And, um, that existing approach, I don't know, um, how that works, so each of these approaches meets the criteria, uh, there's difference of opinion between the city and I. Meets the existing, uh, approach distances, if you use their new draft, they're doing draft design standards, so, uh, private to, to public, it meets all of those criteria. The only one that doesn't meet that is my existing approach and the new proposed main entrance. And the reason for that is one, they're, they're kind of fixed in space in a way, one of them's underneath the power transmission line, the other one's existing, so I, don't have a lot of flexibility in moving it, um, that makes sense, but if you have any questions, that's what I'm asking for is, uh, is approval on those, and the reason it's before you today is we went to planning commission, commission meeting. It was continued for two weeks, at that planning commission meeting, they asked, basically, it would be nice to have these approved, um, the reason for that is it's one less thing they gotta figure out. Commissioner Tisdale was at that meeting as well, if I'm speaking, that's, I'll, I'll leave it to him, but essentially, that's why it's here today in front of you, and it's maybe not the normal process. But they asked me to get this resolved.
John, is it true then, or Brad, that this is in the city's plating jurisdiction? But they, the city would say that this is a county road, so that any permits have to be issued or approved by the county, is that fair?
That is correct, and that's what I, that's what Mr. Limbo has told me that, you know, this is their next step, they want us to approve these permits before they go any further with approving this development. He's also kind of concerned, and I'll let him maybe answer this, but he was concerned about city services out there. And, which, I mean, that's not our problem, I guess, but what does bother me about this is that anything within the right of way of these approaches is gonna, is gonna be our, it's gonna be our problem. Um, that means the asphalt aprons from the, from the development within the right of way of our road will be at our expense in the future, we've already got issues with that right now with roads in city limits where the city takes care of the road up to, up to their, to the right of way, and then they leave the rest of it to us, which, which has created some issues for us, you know, some expense, we're, we're out repairing, we just replaced over in the, uh, industrial park in Spearfish, we just replaced a thirty-foot, uh, section of asphalt, because the city, you know, they ended at the right of way and, and we have to take care of that section of, of that road now, that approach. If there would be some verbiage in there that would, that would alleviate the county for being responsible for this type of a deal, I guess that would, that would make it a little more attractive to me.
Just to address part of that, if we approve this, I'm also gonna specify that that additional, because they're asking for additional right of way, that it's not ours. So the apron wouldn't be ours.
But it would be ours for that thirty, you know, from the thirty-three foot from the center line would still be ours, so.
Yeah, then they'd have a stretch in there.
Yeah. I mean, like I'm saying, we just did this, yeah, we gotta, there's a piece of property that we're gonna have to maintain and repair, which, you know, being pavement, it can last a long time without, without any issues, but when it becomes an issue, it's ours.
Just a quick question for Brad, Brad, did I understand you to say that the city, although we say it's a county road, the county has to prove the approaches, but it is, is offering input on the appropriateness of the location of your approaches?
Yeah, so the city, um, well, they have, yeah, they have a draft standard, so the city doesn't want us to keep our, our main, the city staff doesn't want us to keep our main approach. They've said actually that none of these fit the, the ordinance, because they're, uh, on a arterial road, it's thirteen hundred and twenty feet. Um, if you use their draft standards, there's a specific chart, I have it here, um, it's two hundred and fifty feet, so there's some differences in opinion. But, and, and I think, I don't know, so this, this approach down here to the south, I don't think, so that's not one that I'm planning on building at this time, I want to get approval for it. Because the city is, is really getting into putting restriction on, they want, they want no approaches other than approved approaches on a plat, so like, I want that for the future of like, if there's ever a need to enter this property in the fifty acres on the south, I would like to have that approved, I'm not planning on, I have zero interest in developing that fifty acre lot. But I wanna secure the approach for it now.
What would your recommendation be for to protect the county?
My ultimate recommendation would be that the city take over this section of road. You know, because it, it is city limits and, and just a little bit north is it's city limits on both sides of the Maitland Road, so we have our Maitland Road going right through the city that is continuing, continuing to expand and additional development, which is gonna increase the, the use of that road, which it's not, was, you know, it's, we're, we're, we're getting ADT numbers that these, this road was never designed for. So my recommendation would be if it, in a perfect world, that the city would be responsible for this section of road.
Two things, do we have authority to do something like that?
To do what exactly? No.
Two, didn't I hear legislation this year that if the city limits is connecting to a road, transfers from the county to the city, or am I mistaken?
So I think there is an existing law that says if it's a borderline road, that the city's supposed to have it, but there's, that's subject to interpretation, right? Thirty-one seventeen seventeen is the law that you're referring to, and that refers to a road that is borderline road to a, to municipality, becomes responsibility to the municipality. Uh, the state's interpretation of that is it doesn't exactly describe how much of the road has to be a borderline, what portions of the road, and to keep from leapfrogging the road up and down, what's county and what is city, there, there, that is currently being reviewed at this time at state level.
True also, John, in addition to that discussion, that, uh, a more global approach is being discussed as well, potentially some legislation this year, is that fair?
There was a study group assembled, um, we're a part of, that it, it, there, there has not been any formal meetings at this time, a bunch of emails. There, and, and the talk about is putting this into an annexation law and not into the, into the highway law.
I did, I was just gonna make some general comments. I, I also feel the existing access should go away if we approve the other ones, the concern, I had concern about the, the new southern hammerhead that he's asking for, but we also need to provide access to any other lot. And he's plating, it looks like the track L is actually going to be platted, so it should the rights have some kind of access proof for it to, for that plat, I would agree, to be there, so if, if I were to, to agree with what I see there, it would be the, the original one would go away upon completion of the access across the creek on the main entrance. Uh, and that the city would maintain the, the additional right of way that they're requiring for the plating of this plat. This would be my, my two issues or my, my current two concerns with what I'm looking at.
I'm just thinking out loud, just to propose something consistent with what you've done in the past, if you're implying to want to move forward with this, I think the language that you've used were, uh, you don't think you have the authority to do it, that it should be a city road, but to the extent that you do have authority, you're authorizing the chairman to sign it, but very specifically, that additional right of way that has never been part of the county system is, 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 clearly excluded from, there's no attempt to add that or acknowledge it as part of the county system.
Can I add something to that? So, the interesting thing about it, so we just did a, we tried to do a plat across the street, Helly and Eddie lives across the street. The city denied her plat because she would not dedicate, remove a portion of public right of way. So the, right now, the property line goes to the center line of Maitland Road, it's as an easement. We proposed, uh, a replat of her lot as an easement, an additional seventeen feet. They denied that, um, because they wanted her to remove that and put it entirely as a public right of way. And then on ours, they proposed that the entire development become private, and that the entire thing become a, an easement. So then, the actual dedication on the right of way, there's a thirty-three foot access, or there's a thirty-three foot easement on Maitland Road. We will be dedicating to public right of way fifty.
Yeah, and we will only maintain thirty-three of that. The rest of that will be owned by the city, if, if it actually is our road.
This is a dramatic conversation, but I think Brad, what you're saying is, is to the extent that you have sort of like cul-de-sacs or driveways or whatever they may be, that the city's saying that those are not gonna be city streets, that those would be, that those would be maintained by our road district or homeowners association or something, is that fair?
Yeah, that's what their proposal was.
So in other words, they have less publicly dedicated roads coming off the county road, they're, they would be private and not public, if that makes sense to everyone? That's something new, I haven't heard that before.
Well, we need to, uh, make sure that the city, uh, takes care of it right now, we're never gonna get it changed in the future.
And I'm trying not to get caught in the middle of it, because I know it's a decades-long battle, but I'm trying to do something, so.
There could be such a thing that if these were approved, uh, there's enough approaches under the rule. Probably tend to be slowed, city would have more attention towards that area and might put pressure on, I don't know. You need a motion going there.
We don't have applications at this time for, for these, uh, approaches. There's nothing to sign, he has not submitted applications at this time. He, he, he's bringing this to us right now, I guess, in my opinion, you're bringing to us, to bring it to our attention.
Process typically is that we submit to the city a, a plat, it goes through the city plating process, once it's approved at the city, then it comes to the county for final approval on the approaches. Um, I think that's how it's typically done, um, this one is not typical in any way, but, um, they were asking for clarity on the approaches, so that I could provide to them in two weeks, that, hey, we've, we've got approaches approved or some sort of substantial discussion about the approaches being approved.
And I guess at this time, I guess that's all we have, is the discussion about the approaches and the idea of what we may do. I guess the next step would be, you know, to get, to get some applications for these approaches in place.
So does that typically come from me, the applicant, or does that come from the city?
It would become from you, the applicant. So I'm, I would think that there is nothing to do at this time as far as a, a motion or any kind of.
I, I, I would think we could make a motion based on the exhibit that's given, that, that, that the application when submitted in subsan, substantially the same area could be, you could then sign off on.
in subsan- substantially the same area could be, you could then sign off on. It's my, my thought on that, and Mr. Alt would have a much better grasp of that.
I think what you're trying to say is you've heard the discussion, the inclination, I think, is probably for approval, which is Mr. Limbo is looking for, something to take back to the city, although you don't have the applications in front of you. So I guess the decision could change once the applications are in front of the board, but you've heard the direction, I think, from the board, consistent with, with approval, is that fair? I mean, which are, what kind of what you're thinking?
My, my guess is Brad doesn't wanna sink a bunch more money and a bunch more time into this if the county's gonna deny the access on the plat.
Yeah.
Which makes complete sense to me because, just like we've done before, kicking the can back and forth between the city and the, and the county and the applicant, stuck in the middle, like to have some kind of understanding of where he'd be when he goes through the city. With that, I will make the motion. Bruce had some, some verbiage about, well, if, if this is our road, and to the extent that it is or it isn't, I would approve the three new access points, more or less what they are with, with final approval with the highway superintendent, and at such time as the middle main approach is built, that the existing approach to the house be removed and obliterated, they could come right off the end of that cul-de-sac, even if you don't finish building the cul-de-sac, that's a discussion for the city. Uh, and that any additional right of way beyond our thirty-three feet on that side of Maitland Road is not under ownership of the county.
Never has been, never will be.
Correct.
That's your motion?
It is.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second it for the sake of having further discussion, go ahead.
So I think that, uh, Brandon's motion is predicated upon the information provided is adequate enough to be considered to be applications, cancel the motion.
There will be applications to follow.
For the record, to supplement the record.
And that would be on the fourteenth, right?
Well, no, I think you're, you're looking to take action today, right, Brandon, to approve them?
Yes, and then you could, as long as you're, as long as those approaches are substantially within the area that shows on here, you're, you're, you are authorized then to sign them without breaking a back promise, as long as they look like this.
The motion passes, then, then the permits are granted, but then as a housekeeping measure, you would like the actual applications to be submitted consistent with what's been discussed and approved here today.
Fair enough.
And ground proof.
And so then, if, if John is not satisfied with it, you would come back to the commission, is that how that process works? I think so, but I think you need to give him free, clear direction that whatever applications are made shall be consistent with the discussion here today, so there should be no ambiguity.
And I'd be authorized to sign.
Yes.
No, I, I think we should turn it over to the city and make sure they get to sign it, because if they're gonna turn it, they aren't gonna turn it over to us.
Bruce gave us guidance that we can't do that. Yes, I agree with you, however.
Can I have, I have one question, just so I have a better understanding. The, um, uh, obliteration portion of the approach, is it, is it, would it be acceptable to fence it? So it's, it's not, it's not usable unless there's an emergency or some other extenuance. As long as it's fenced and blocked, not like a, not like a gate or something that I can easily move, like.
You're just thinking somebody get across the creek, that they can cut the fence and go across.
Correct.
But you fence it off so it can't be used normally. I would, I would ask Mr. Bay's opinion on that. I can see a reason for it, but I also.
Brandon, would that be, I'm not familiar with it, having that fence across there, not a gate, is that sort of like for an emergency purpose?
Correct, in case, for some reason, it has to be accessed, like it, like something happens on the other bridge or something, I mean, it's just a, and the other piece of that is when you start removing things that are existing within a creek bed, then you start opening up permits and all kinds of other stuff, so it's like, at some point, I, I would like to just block it off with the idea that if needed, we'll remove it, but.
How, how about obliterate the road and leave the crossing? Break it up, throw seed on it, but the crossing stays, cuz there, there probably would be a four oh four to pull out even what's there now. I don't know how much that drainage is considered a live water, I think it is.
There would be, yeah, you would have to have a permit to remove anything.
It's easy to leave it and just obliterate the roadway, but not the crossing.
I'm not, I, I, you know, just a gate across it to me is, I don't know, I, I like your idea of actually removal of the road, if it was a seeded over type of property.
And that's what, and you're talking about a fence and not a gate, right, but if somebody needed to get out, they could cut it.
Yeah, and it would, I don't know, I'm a cynic, it would be cut and it'd be cut forever. That's what I would see.
I'm in agreement there, if, if there's a cul-de-sac approach there, it's going to be. Uh, I would like to see that approach gone because of the distance to the new approach.
They're pretty close.
That doesn't change your motion, correct?
Currently, no, it still says obliterate.
Right, uh, further discussion. Seeing that we have a motion by Cladine, seconded by Ewing for approval, uh, with the language included, that everyone's familiar with. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, not, not like, like I think of it, it sounds like, uh, you, you are going to, uh, just have a grass runway until such chance that they need it, then the city will have to do something. I know, right?
No.
No? Or don't you, did you say something?
The motion was to obliterate that access, so to remove anything, so they can't use the new one, or the, the old one.
So, Richard, I think there'll be three new ones, and then the existing one will have to be obliterated and go away, and so, that's, I think that's a summary of what you've heard today. Three, one goes to four, which would go down to three, if that makes sense.
So were you and I on it then, Richard?
Yeah.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
I'm done, if you guys don't have anything for me, I have no more for you. The day's not done.
I think, I think I'm a little glad you chipped seal that service, right, about smoked a deer, it was a dust, I turned rally on there by motorcycle, locked the bolt brakes.
On one was fourteen?
Yeah, right before it goes onto the interstate there.
Hey Craig, if you can hear us, can you mute your monitor, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
In a good way over here, an irrevocable or dissection action on the release of Spearfish Mountain Ranch.
Okay, I'm actually gonna ask Amy if you would turn on your mic and explain this a little bit. You have two different items on here. You have the Spearfish Mountain Ranch LLC release, but then you also have Wildflower Estates on here. Give a quick update what the two different documents are.
I'll take a picture.
She might be coming down.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you for a moment there. Spearfish Mountain Ranch is the holder of, so like the owner at the time of Wildflower Estates. So that is just who the memorandum of agreement that it is under, but it is for Wildflower Estates.
Okay, okay, thank you. So you guys have the original irrevocable standby letter of credit and we have that here. We are ready to release it, it looks like. We had John go out, he did a report for you guys on how, what he saw and that it was good to go. So we also have a letter from the toy design group that said basically everything's completed and here's his write-up plus the as-built that we asked that they have. So everything's here. The release would be for $286,350.
Okay, let's play here. Releasing the bond, is that where it is? I'll move to release the bond to Wildflower Estates. Spearfish Mountain Ranch.
The subdivision is Wildflower Estates.
The bond is with Spearfish.
One second. Okay, motion by adjutant sectioned by Tisdale, further discussion, please.
Part of the bond I see is for a water tank, 40,000 gallons steel bolt tank for $286,350. The stuff we have is for roads. So I'm not so sure, I don't understand why we're talking about releasing it on the roads when the bond I see is for the water system. Am I, am I missing something?
Amber, I can answer that if you'd like me to. What that is pertaining to is... That is correct, it was for the tank only at the time. The prior bond was released by the bank. And without our knowledge, so we just had the bond only for the tank. So we told them that there would be no plating, no building permit until the road was completed and we would not release the bond until the as-bills were also done.
Is the tank in place?
It is. And there should be documentation in there that shows that.
So if you were, this was a few months ago, I had brought this to your attention. This was one of those situations that we've never had it happen before, but a bank, by the act of the person that held the letter of credit, said, "I don't want the letter of credit, cancel it." We did not find out about it until I went to find out. Well, basically stuff had happened and we asked. We've never had that happen before. A bank's never released it without notifying us. So it was an out-of-state bank. Don't know.
We need to address that separately.
Yeah. So it was, so in that case Bruce said, "Well, no building permits, no nothing. They're gonna follow the regular process." So that's what we did.
Call a question.
All right, all those in favor of the motion before us will say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
I would also make a motion that we don't allow any, we don't accept any bonds from whatever bank that was. If they can revoke an irrevocable letter of credit, we don't want to do business with them.
I'll second it, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will sit down.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I was in on that one.
All right, here we go. Public hearing.
This is for Deadwood Gem LLC, Jennifer and Gray Cashmider. This is in lot 2A, revised subdivision lot 2. If anybody knows the Powderhouse area, this was the old, this is the land that had the old gravel pit in it. So when they first started that subdivision, they mined stuff out of there and then built the roads out of the gravel that was in there. That intention was always to be some sort of storage area of some sort. And, you know, by the time the subdivision was, was built out. They have opted forward with that, so they're looking at storage units down in there. We did double-check with the DNR because we were just wondering, you know, how that works if you hold a state mine license, bond and reclamation and, you know, does this count towards that or whatnot? The state had no concern with it, they were fine with it being utilized as that purpose. And so they did provide, you know, we did get an email to that nature. And then they provided what the layout of it's going to look like. They've already done some engineering on it. They've got the plans in here that we submitted to you all. There really was no concern, it, it's in line with what they have offered initially.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open that at this time and offer to the public in the room or online, if you'd like to speak to this, please state your name and address to the record. Is your name up there in the body of the room that would like to speak to this? Anyone online?
Well, yeah, I guess I can, I can start. Hi there, my name is Craig Davis. I'm a property owner, I would call it to the, oh, southeast of the proposed site. Our particular property is lot 12, block 7. So I'm at the corner of...
What's your actual address, sir?
21229 Autumn Lane.
Okay, thank you.
I'm at the corner of Autumn Lane in Ridgewood Trail. And I, I happened to be at our, our property here a week ago and saw the notice of public hearing. So I just wanted to call in and now, now I've got the full plan that Amy sent, so I, I appreciate that. You know, there was always some rumors in the neighborhood about maybe some storage facilities or some kind of commercial use going in there. There's been a, a lot of activity on the site in the last probably 45 days. And now that I see the plan and there's proposed 172 storage units on that site, I guess I just have some real concerns about traffic flow would be probably the, the first concern. There's no direct public access to these units. I, I assume the intent is to, to rent these or sell these to the public. And I don't, you know, I don't know how familiar you are with this particular site, but this is quite a ways off the main highway and you have to travel a fair distance. I would say at least a mile through the development to get to this site. It's a dead end at the end of Ridgewood Trail. And I just have some real concerns about traffic flow in and out of that development with 173 storage units. You know, not, not to, not to mention the, the eyesore basically that it would create in this, in this development that's full of one to four family homes. There's a number of, of, well, there's eight residences that directly border this property. And I didn't pull the tax assessed value on all of them, but I'm fairly comfortable that it's north of $8 million. I know what mine is assessed at and the other properties are, are at or above the, the value of my particular property. There are four to five properties that are directly border this proposed property. And so, you know, it's gonna have an impact on property values in and around this area. There, there's no doubt about that. Quite frankly, I would have chosen a different lot in this development if I knew this was gonna happen to this scale. And, you know, over the last couple of years, there had been a berm dirt, eight to nine feet, I would say, barrier that kind of blocked your line of sight into this property and that has now been removed. And it's all been graded and it's flat and quite frankly, it's, it's a, it's an eyesore for the, for the adjacent property owners. And like I said, you know, we're, we're, we're talking some fairly substantial homes that were built in this development. And if this were right on the highway, I guess I would understand it a little better, but there is no direct highway access to this. So you're gonna have people driving through this development to get to this location. And quite frankly, I just, I, I think that's a, a big concern. It's a quiet, very well-maintained, very well-run development. The, most of the properties around this particular site are not VRBO properties. There are a couple, but most, most of the adjacent neighbors are not renters. And so I guess, you know, I just wanted to call in and, and express my concern over a project of this size and scale. It, it, in my opinion, is not what Powderhouse Pass was developed for. I understand it's a gravel pit or was a gravel pit that has since been mined. But it, it isn't zoned one to four, or excuse me, it isn't zoned commercial right now, which is what they're asking for. And I guess I would just ask the commission to take that into account. This was a really nice corner, very beautiful part of the Black Hills and now it's gonna look like a storage unit facility and, and that's my concern. And I guess, you know, I know there's some other neighbors probably on the call here too, but that, that would be my concern, so I appreciate your time.
Sir, do you live on your property full-time then?
Well, I live in Pierce, so I, I'm there probably at least half the time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone further online that would like to speak at this time?
Hi, my name is Jessica Korns and we live across the street from Craig at 21228 Autumn Lane. And we would like to express the same concerns, especially the traffic flow. Even when we were, heard the rumors going around, no idea that there was planned to be so many units, number one. Number two, there is only one way in and out of there because it is a cul-de-sac. So not only do you have the traffic flow coming in, but they have to go back out the exact same way. And I'm assuming there's gonna be quite a bit of lighting in a storage unit facility, which is going to definitely affect our property, shining into the house. So I don't know what, if, if it is approved, what the situation is gonna be with, like if there's gonna be limitations to when the lights can be on and off. But we're also very much worried about our property values. So we would just express a lot of the same concerns that Craig has. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone further online that would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, anyone in the lobby?
I guess I would add one additional comment. I, I happened to be at our property last week or I would not have any idea that this hearing was scheduled. There's a, there was a little orange sign that was placed on the, on the entrance to this. So I don't know if it's typical to put the neighboring property owners on, on notice, but just by happenstance, I figured out there was, was a meeting today. So I, I do think that you would hear from other property owners if they were aware that this hearing was scheduled and like I said, thankfully, I am there a lot. The, the neighbor that spoke, you know, they, they don't live in South Dakota, so they're not there as much as I am, but I, I would, I would just, I don't know what the standard is for public notice, but the, the sign on the lot, I just happened to be out for a walk with my wife and saw the sign. But I can assure you that there would be other concerned property owners adjacent to this property if they were aware that the public hearing was occurring today.
Okay, thank you. Amber, do you wanna pull up on the process?
Yeah, it's, it's a development plan, which means that property was intended for a commercial use and always has been even back when the lots were originally sold. It was a gravel pit, so it was already a gra, a commercial entity in there. And then a development plan itself only has to have one public hearing in front of county commission. They required to put the notice up, which they did. And then it was in the paper, marking normally within 10 days in advance for on the agenda of the overall public notice process.
All right, anyone further online or in the room that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing part of this and offer to the board.
And you do have, I don't know if you want any specific questions answered, but I'm assuming John, you can probably help with some of that if there is questions?
Please, please. Do we still have requirement of down throw lighting?
We, you can, I would need to have that as a condition of the development plan.
I would like to see that, I'd also like to have that put in the ordinance at some point 'cause I think at one time we had something along those lines.
Well, for CUPs, yes, development plan, there's a little verbiage that says you can put it as a condition.
The other thing I'd like to see is that for, for PUDs, because of the, the nature of the thing, then maybe we need a buffer around there to notify the neighbors by mail because...
Well, it'd be your regular development plan process.
Well, it, okay.
You would, you would have to change the process of a development plan.
That's what I'm saying. 'Cause it, 'cause I can see where the concern comes in because normally there'd be a change of zoning or, or this should have been, there is constructive notice because it wasn't operating gravel pit, that something is probably gonna go on there. However, it'd be nice to know there's a change of use. It's just my, my thinking that is not an emotion or anything else of this type, put that out there. I understand the concern from Mr. Davis and, and it would be nice to have a little bit better notification on those kind of things when you just don't know, when some people just don't know.
Okay, further discussion.
I guess I'll just add another comment. This, I suspect I wouldn't rent anything in there. I'm guessing that they're probably gonna try to market this and it would only make sense to market to people that have lots up there for storage of their stuff. There it is, that it being said, there are a lot of units there. But where this is, I, I remember going as a kid and my only other concern is drainage out of there. It was kind of in a hole and I imagine they've done a lot of work since they did the gravel, but that's, that's probably more a concern for their, their builder. I don't know, we don't really have drainage stuff in the county, drainage plans or drainage requirements necessarily. But that's, for what that area is back there, it's really about the only practical use. 'Cause it's, I remember in the early, early 80s or might even been late 70s, it was just, it was the sand mines or part of the sand mines is forest service gravel pit, I think for putting gravel on the, on the pathways, on the railroad grade, tuck it in.
I tend to agree with you on the thought process that the ones that'll probably be utilizing it will be the people that are liberated in that community because it's not like it's out where it's really accessible to other people. Okay? What's your pleasure?
I guess all good when approved. It's not a change, change of BP, is that where it is to allow us to...
No, it's a development plan, just like a regular, like we do on any commercial property.
I'll move to approve the development. As presented.
Could you add the down throw lighting, sir?
You can put conditions on it.
What's the condition of down throw lighting? Yeah, I was trying to remember if that was part of that.
Yep, you can do that.
Yep, I would like to do that, please.
I will second that with the down throw lighting.
Okay, the motion will second, further discussion.
I'll just add that I, I have concerns about the traffic also. Those aren't very wide ropes and they're, they're can be steep at times. Not sure that, that this, these units are going to add that much traffic to an already existing problem. So I guess, you know, it's already a poor situation, I think, for traffic in there. But the other thing is, I think that storage units are a typical use for commercially zoned property and, or highway service commercial zoned property. And that's a use that's, that's permitted in, in that type of the zone. You should expect that type of use to occur.
Okay, any more discussion?
Is there, so this is Craig Davis, can I ask a question?
Sir, I, I closed the public hearing.
Okay.
But go ahead, real quick.
Well, I just wondered if there's any kind of visual barrier that they could put along the Ridgeway Trail side as a part of their plan to at least try to appease some of the neighboring property owners. There was, there was a visual barrier there. None of us could see what was going on in there. That has since been removed and, and platted, flattened, basically. I just, I think that would be a compromise that would make all of us feel a lot better as, as neighbors to this property. I will also tell you, the, the rumors were not anywhere close to 173 storage units. I, I, I had heard 20 to 30. The scale of this thing is dramatically different than what was going around the neighborhood. And I would just reiterate, there are a number of property owners that are not present at this meeting that did not know there was a public hearing, that are not gonna be happy with the, the, the storage units being placed here. So I don't know, as a compromise, as a compromise, some kind of visual barrier. The, the lighting is one thing, but to see in this thing is completely another. And a lot of us put a lot, a lot of money into properties out here and didn't expect this kind of facility to be at the end of our street. So I, you know, I don't know if that's something the developer would consider, but I think that...
Have you requested to talk to the developer? 'Cause I think if you would, as an organization, you probably could.
Okay, well, we're not gonna have a conversation. The public hearing has been closed. We followed the rules to post it so that the public would know. And we've got a motion in a second on the before us here. I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Well, opposed. All right, next one, Amber.
Next one is another development plan, also within Powderhouse Pass. You guys have seen some of this one before. There was some questions, we've seen the plat come through lot 3, lot 1. This one is for a different type of storage, but it's, it's a little more, I would say, higher-end, pure, for your large, you know, ATVs, UTVs, different extra stuff. But they would be looking at selling these. This is along Rochford Road. This, also John had looked at this a number of times 'cause he was concerned about, you know, having access in and out where you have Brownsville Road and Rochford Road. So they did alleviate those concerns off of this. So it looks like those are fine. And then basically it's just your, what they had submitted before, larger buildings, but it's still a storage of some sort. We did have a discussion, you know, that they cannot be used for residential use because that's not how they were engineered or built for. It is in one of the designated areas on the Land Use Amendment Master Plan that you guys had approved back in 2023. This is one of those lots that was within that kind of commercial designation area.
Okay. Again, a public hearing, we'll open it up to the public in the room and online. If you would like to speak to this, please state your name and address to the record. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this? Okay, how about online? Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this? One more time in the room, anyone? Online? Close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
What are the utilities planned on this, for this problem? Basically, is there gonna be water?
Thinking about bathrooms, there'll be bathrooms in each home.
So there's storage facilities with restaurants in them?
There are a, what do they wanna call it? Basically, it's a large shop building with a bathroom and a loft area.
Okay, so there, there, there could be more than just occupation for a little bit. How long is the cul-de-sac in this? How do they, where's the egress out of this lot?
This is, these were the plans that...
I, I, what, where, where are they gonna get, I see a way in?
Your engineers are here, so if you'd like to...
How are we gonna get out of this?
So, so to, to the north, there's access up a black forest road and that'll take place during phase one. And then the road will continue through during later phases. Then the south egress will be on Satinwood Way. We spoke with John, with the county, they did not want access up Rochford Road or Brownsville Road. So when we did that plat, we extended the area down by Satinwood Way, that's in the southeast corner. So that's far enough away from Brownsville Road intersection that that could be an egress. So that's far enough away from Brownsville Road intersection that that could be an egress, whether that's a one-way or it could be two-way, one-way, whatever works best for that traffic.
Is it far enough off of Satinwood Way and Brownsville Road to be safe?
Yeah.
I don't I don't see it on this plot or on this diagram.
On this one? This whole package in there?
Yeah, I'm scrolling through it right now.
On this one? So it's before the phase one?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, and I don't actually see a road.
Yes.
I see, I see.
He had him move this access this way, so this little thing, this lot comes to Satinwood.
Sure.
So they'll come out this way and.
So I see a zero, a zero turn from from. It's going to parallel the Brownsville Road, and how far off the Brownsville Road is that? Sixty feet?
Sixty-five foot wide from the right of way, and so the road is actually even further than the sixty or sixty-five point nine feet. So so initially that width was smaller. We had talked to Amber and John and extended that, and they gave us a minimum distance that that width that needed to be. So that's when we did that plat. We we took we took area out of the residential lot there, that's off of Satinwood, and made that so. And the discussion, yeah, we had that discussion that that would be used as an egress during later phases, so it wasn't just a you get in, there's no way out type of thing.
Yeah, but this was redrawn to how John had asked him to redraw, so.
Mr. Bay?
Yeah, because it wasn't this way originally, and John had concerns, so he said, well, if you do it this way, and I think the thought was is you have a, they come in, a black doors do one way, and come back out, so it's not two-way traffic.
Split in every lot.
Yep.
Okay, further discussion?
The phase one is going to be eight, and then if you keep going as the phases go down, if they work well, they'll build another set, another set, another set, so that'll be the entire width. They won't go back. We'll do that same layout. Yeah, so this is just the first phase. It's just that first phase, but if you keep going, that's our intention to go all the way down. So if this development plan is approved, basically I would go forward with approving eight units at a time, you know, each phase going down.
Each phase will come in though, right?
No.
Just this will start the process?
This will start the process, and then this is what they would look like all the way down. Because they're giving you the development plan for the entire thing.
Further discussion or action?
I don't think they ought to be doing it. Well, if this project is my last one down there, I think that's probably the end of the housing that I've ever heard of, should be in the city.
And you do have two different landlords. One of them is the developers and one of them is the private.
And we.
Carl, which is a planned unit development, and they were both.
Martial family and residential. We approved it on that.
I know, we have.
Access to the unit, I have a motion to approve it.
By having.
I second the motion for further discussion. Go ahead.
So by having water in a large area and use, does that come against their total lots that they can have?
Um, I, well, I have an email in my office, but I know they have questions on it. We are in disagreement. I look at this as if each of these are broken out into individual lots, which he might sell. I mean, if he kept all ownership, I think it's, you know, that's vacant all of it, but if he's going to try to break these into separate, you know, or ownership-wise, in the end, then I think it needs to go toward the total units. I do know that Ashmiders and myself have a difference of opinion on how that is going to be designated. The original PUD was seventy-two acres slash seventy-two units.
There's there's two things that the final decision on that comes from this board, and if they're individually owned, they're condominiums.
That's how I looked at it.
That's a unit.
So it's like each unit.
The other thing is, is I'd request that they require down through lighting on this as well, especially along the highway. I mean, anytime you get near houses or on the highway, you should have that. It's going to get blinded.
I think that's an important discussion that it's clear upfront if that what it is that these are considered to be towards their density as individual units. Could the motion, the second, be amended accordingly to reflect that?
Definitely.
Would you consider to do that today so that the ambiguity is gone in the future?
I'd love to amend my my motion to state that if they kind of know this out and sell the units, they're all over this the total unit number, and they have down lighting.
Do you think so? There's any individual owners, those individual owners are considered to be a density unit?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll amend my second.
Further discussion? Did that also through the.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of this motion will say aye. Brenda, would you like to review? Roll call, please.
Jenny?
Aye.
Kizdo?
Aye.
Sweet?
Oh.
Anybody?
Aye.
You want?
Aye.
All right. Order one, it does pass. All right, before we start this next one, we need to recess this County Commission and convene as a word of adjustment.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Finingen, seconded by Jennings. All those in favor of the.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried later are now acting as the word of adjustment. Amber, you want to give us one? This is also a public hearing.
Yeah, this is the variance for Spencer and Kevin Kuchenbecker. You guys had actually kind of gotten a little bit of view on this one before I told you it would be approved of the plat that was done a month ago. And Kevin is here for request as well, but this one basically came down to a building that was issued on the property. It was not a covered deck in the building permit, so it wouldn't have needed a variance, but afterwards he decided to cover it, and that issue made it need a variance. So he provided a site plan in here that shows where the twenty-five foot setback would be, and it's literally the little tiny corner of the covered deck is what is not within. It doesn't need the setback. So with that, we did decipher, and this was found when we did the refit because he made a structure on it. That's how this was all found. And Kevin is here. He did put a letter together, and I know he wanted to talk to the board as well, so.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, Kevin, would you like to speak?
Yes, if I may, and I've put an illustration that shows that this, the staff report or what was published in the agenda says four point nine four feet request for a variance. It's actually less than ten square feet. It goes from fourteen inches to zero inches for. So if you go from this corner of the table to Bob's phone, it's about what it is, and it was due to the curvature of the road that wasn't taken into consideration. The majority of the porch is in there. Should have been part of the building permit. It was an afterthought when we decided to sell the residence rather than keep it, and we wanted to make it a little more attractive. There are trees between the the road and the porch, and it is the only residence that is on this cul-de-sac on Alex Court or Alex Circle, excuse me. And we request your consideration of this.
May I? I think it's in the staff report, but just as a reminder, state law tells us it's a two-part test for considering variances. You know, me and coming up.
Yes.
So the first problem is whether granting the variance is contrary to the public interest. In other words, to approve, there must be a finding that the variance would not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public interest or welfare. Part two is to approve, to prove there must be a finding in special conditions such that because of a particular feature of the property or because of some extraordinary and exceptional situation on the property, a variance is necessary, all to be considered with whether denial of the variance would create a failure and exceptional practical difficulty or an exceptional and undue hardship. Not my words, but springboard. Okay?
And if I may, I tried to answer that on the front of that handout down at the bottom where it is our opinion, and of course, that this would not be injurious to the neighborhood or public welfare. The lot was, had a steep terrain associated with it. That's why the house is built the way it is. It's only twenty-eight by thirty-eight. It's a two-story house. And I think the removal of the porch would damage the aesthetics associated with it, and of course, we acknowledge it.
At this time, we'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the room or online that would like to speak to this would ask, would state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this? Okay, anyone online? Okay, one more time. Anyone in the audience or online? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and off to the board.
It has required two thirds of each one of the super majority to four out of five. Unlike a CUP, which is a word of adjustment, but it's all simply something that's already supposed to be.
Okay.
Next, required four out of.
All right. Further discussion or action? Under the fact I can't make a motion.
Obviously, we dealt with this, the planning zoning. The discussion there came down to the fact that the covered deck was not in the building plan, and that just putting that on does not cause undue hardship, so I would go denial of this variance. Yeah, Amber?
Very.
Mark your follow, but that looks true.
All right, that motion dies for a lack of a second.
Okay. No, I've I've got some other discussions that I have different problems with this just in that. But the carport that turned, the covered, the uncovered deck that's essentially a carport is another that's out in the right way, but that's.
But we're not really.
No, no.
So is planning and zoning in IS? Eric's on planning and zoning. There actually a member going along with you?
There was a motion to approve it, and it failed. Potentially they denied that very. So it came forward with no recommendation technically?
Yes, pretty much, yeah. May I ask a question?
Yes, you certainly sure.
Kevin, is this property served by a road district, or how are the roads maintained?
It is the Golden Hills Road District.
Has the road district issued any kind of an opinion, any objection to this in terms of that causing them harm with snow removal or maintenance or anything of the sort, and or are they aware of it?
They should be. They're aware of it. They, of course, they're my neighbors, so yes, they are aware of it. No, no comments have been made. Now they enjoy the the plan.
So the setback, the base request does not affect a neighboring property. Is it, is that fair? It's mostly would be an issue between you and the road district, road maintenance?
That would be correct.
I'm going to help with the discussion, but questions I had.
Well, yeah, it doesn't cause any other neighboring property, so. But as far as making, putting the other two criteria forward.
It doesn't. They're always aligned.
No. No sense part of it. I I see no harm here whatsoever. I mean, we're talking about fifteen inches. Special trees and things between the road and it.
Am I, is it is it struggle with the the idea that there are special conditions that exist?
Yes. It's not extraordinary, exceptional, or peculiar. You made a motion, didn't you, Eric?
It died. It died for lack of a second.
I'll just see what happens. I'm making a motion to approve it.
I'll have a second for further discussion. Further discussion. Right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question and for approval. Brenda, would you please do a roll call vote?
Jenny?
Nay.
Kizdo?
Aye.
Sweet?
Aye.
Fine again?
I just want to.
I I have to say nay. I'm with, I'm with their.
On this one, dies for lack of a super majority.
Yeah.
All right.
So.
Two thirds and George, yeah.
So with that, my next question with these are always. We now are dealing with a situation that there's a structure that doesn't need to be, so. Are you going to any, is that a separate item? Because I need to know what to tell them.
I guess I would make sure.
Go ahead.
Kevin, had you done any planning in the event that the variance request failed about power to bring any compliance or any thoughts? Time table?
No, I had had not.
Basically, if the covered area gets removed and the posts get removed, the concrete, I don't care about. So that would be your recourse.
But if you took fifteen inches off, it's also being compliance.
Yes.
Okay, I guess.
Basically, the existing covered patio needs to be brought into compliance, whether you choose to change the shape of it to match exactly or remove it altogether.
How much time does he have?
That's your guy's call. You don't, you don't, we usually not run more than six months. I don't think it should take that long to alleviate this, but.
Just for clarification, is it, is it the the roof or the posts?
Both, roof and post.
Well, the post probably setback, isn't there an overhang on them?
Slightly, yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, if the if the posts are back fifteen inches from the edge of the roof line, wouldn't that be?
Right.
Or you measure it from the post there?
No, I I measure it from the post in this case because it's attached to the roof, so.
Is that what shows up on the thing?
What do you mean?
On his diagram, is that how that the post, is that what's marked in the corners from the what we're getting?
I don't know what is actually.
It would be the post, corner of the post.
What shows up on the drawing?
Mm-hmm.
Because to me, you know, normally our setback is to the foundation line, but because he extended the the upper roof, the apartment is attached to the house. To me, that new foundation line would become the post.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So move the post back and can deliver, I'd be fine.
Okay, you just have to prove that the post?
Engineered, yeah.
Yeah, the engineer is, that it's going to hold out everything just like regular and move it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item.
Well, we. Motion to recess is the word of adjustment and reconvene as County Commission.
Sorry. One second. Because you do have more word of adjustment later, there's some intervening flats. I would suggest either remain as word of adjustment and do the CUP reviews, and then take up the flats or not not adjourn as word of adjustment, but recess as word of adjustment and reconvene.
Go measure your word, Brandon.
Yep, do we want to go ahead in the condition of use, or you want to do the condition? Amber, which way would you rather go?
If you, I can wait on the flats. If you want to just go.
Just go, we'll just stay, stay in, word of adjustment, do the CUP stuff quick.
Push up and be next to them.
Yeah.
All right, come on up.
All right, good morning. Got a few transfers this morning to take care of in our CUP list and in a couple of reviews. First one is for the CUP for the Larson Quarry that was just that was just approved not too long ago. They are, whereas you have a letter here from Eric Niese that is basically changing the LLC, the LLP to an LLC for their for their purposes, so that's really the only difference.
Same ownership.
Same ownership, everything you do, just doing this. Somebody explain that, right?
Yeah, I may, I talked to Eric about it. It's just being done for business planning purposes, right? It's related to. It's slated to separate from other entities.
We need a motion to approve that transfer?
Yes, please.
Based on just paperwork, administrative decision or internal business functions? So moved.
Okay, with the motion by flying in seconded by Jennings, further discussion.
I mean, it's true. I think we should add, uh, that, that called it previously approved conditions. Why, as is, uh, to the transfer entity, there is no change discernible because of the action here today.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Okay, uh, next one is C U P, where there's, there's not, it's in kind of a different order just how we're doing things, but C U P four ninety-four dash twenty-five is, uh, the church that David Winter had done a C U P on. He is transferring that over to Kinship Mountain Ministries, which is basically, it's the same thing. It's just under a new name. Um, uh, he had Kinship Mountain before in another place. Uh, conditions stay the same, no changes, just want to transfer from his name to Kinship Mountain Ministries.
Second. Yes, motion by Jennings for approval. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. C U P three fifteen dash twenty-five, um, was the old, uh, Nelson place on, um, off of Boulder Canyon, a new, it's a special resort, uh, being bought by Brandon and Jessica Lindley. Um, we have, uh, some representation here if we need questions. Uh, they want to run it the same exact way, no changes of any conditions, um, and take it over. They've never had a problem with this property, the whole, just a change of ownership.
Second. Motion by Sleep seconded by Tisdale for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Now, this is actually a trans, uh, transfer and a cancellation for C U P four ninety for the same property owners. Um, the C U P was taken out last year and nothing was ever done, done to it. Uh, the new owners don't want to, don't want to continue it. So there's also a email attached saying that they would like to, uh, cancel C U P four ninety. So that's what we were asking for.
I'm hoping they approve the cancellation. Second. Yes, motion by Sleep seconded by flying in, uh, for approval of the cancellation. Further discussion, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close?
All right. Um, another cancellation. This is C U P four fifty-eight, Grant Sawyer. Uh, he's been trying for a couple of years to get the stuff done and, uh, I guess life happens and, uh, he's decided that, uh, he's not going to continue on this. So there's an email attached from Grant asking for a cancellation of C U P four fifty-eight.
So moved. All right. Motion by flying in seconded by Sleep for a lot of cancellations. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close?
All right. Uh, C U P, uh, four sixty-nine dash twenty-four, Troy Schultes out here in Boulder Canyon. Um, he has one cabin that is complete and he is working on his second one. Uh, have not been any problems out there. I drive by there quite often and, uh, the cabins look nice. They're, they're, they're done, done very well. So, uh, we just, uh, recommend doing another, um, another review in twenty, in twelve months. No, we don't need the motion for this. Uh, four seventy-four, Dean Meyer Special Resort, um, Gilded Mountain. First cabin is complete, hasn't started on the second one yet. No problem. So we're just asking for another review in twelve months. Forty-two, Casey Kiel, uh, wedding venue. It's up and running with no issues. And they're due for one more review in twelve months. Last one I have is four eighty-three. This is, uh, Casey and Jeanette Bauer out on Goodatt Road. Uh, the campground, uh, they can have up to twenty sites. Right now they have fifteen. They're working on five more. So I want to wait till they're done with their last five, uh, before we do anything else. So we'll do another review in twelve months. It does. That's all I got. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn as board of adjustment. All right. Okay. Motion by flying in seconded by Jennings, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. We are now back as county commissioners. Amber, we have God. Preliminary and final flat for supporting. New State.
Um, it'd be lots of teenage, new states. It is going to be a replat of thirteen and fourteen combining together. So it's making the lots larger. Um, they're just combining together. So it would be in a grand flat. And there's a preliminary.
Move for his end. Sir. Okay, we have a motion by Tisdale seconded by Jennings for intent. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We approve the preliminary and final.
Sorry, guys.
Okay, we have a motion by Tisdale seconded by Sleep for approval of the preliminary as well as the final. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm not even trying to name.
This is the mall.
Vista Mall?
This, Vista Mall, H S L.
Okay.
Um, so Mr. Vista Mall would like to do lots one and two of the over subdivision, formerly tracks zero one B of the subdivision of track zero and track two. Um, there's been a lot of replat out here, but they're basically trying to kind of follow that road line. Um, so it was originally lots. Uh, well, you can kind of see, they're trying to break it by the road. So the road is going to end up being, you can see on this on the former lot line goes up here. They're trying to just look it down.
Well, I'm. Motion that's exempt. Pardon? Motion that's exempt? Okay. Okay, motion by Tisdale seconded by Jennings to make an exempt. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the preliminary and final. Second. Okay, so motion by Tisdale seconded by Jennings for approval of the preliminary and the final. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. I believe we are down to.
Forty-two and forty-three.
No, we've got, uh, hungry. Here, forty. Come on up.
Good morning. Uh, thank you. Um, we've been busy. Uh, we had, um, our shooting sports program helped out with a step outside program that apparently during COVID got suspended and they just got it started back up again. Um, we had about forty-five kids participate in several different events and our shooting sports went out there and did help with that and it was very well attended and everybody enjoyed themselves and my kid had a lot of fun. Um, we had a, um, senior Natalie Yates. She is a resident of Butte. No, yeah, Butte County. She goes to school in Meade County and she's right on the edge of Lawrence County. So she hits all of us. Um, but she is a junior and she wanted to do a showmanship and judging clinic. So she ran the entire thing, planned it all herself with one of her friends. And we had participants from all three counties, um, that went and participated in that. So very proud of her. And you'll see later on down in here that she was actually voted in or selected, not voted, selected to be an ambassador. So we only have two West River ambassadors, um, for the four H program and she's one of them. So very proud of her. We've had several kids participate in national shooting sports in Nebraska in June. Um, and several, I got the update since then that actually, um, oh, wait, no, I'm talking about state. Sorry, wrong one. So several that participated in nationals, um, for this current year and several that have qualified since then for next year. Um, we had our state horse show judging and hippology team that went and you can see their placings there. They did very well. We haven't had a hippology team in quite a few years. So that program is getting back up and running. We had our rodeo and for, I believe we had over three hundred and fifty participants in our rodeo. It was some of the, uh, businesses in town were like, you've got to warn us when we have these. There was a lot of people. Um, so that was like the week or two after I started, so I wasn't even aware hardly. Um, we had, uh, we've started a Western Heritage Program. Um, and this was our second year doing Western Heritage. Uh, it's a lot of fun. The kids that are in shooting sports get to create a persona. And, um, that lived between eighteen sixty and nineteen hundred. They present their persona. They have a test that they take. We had several kids this year that went to nationals. It wasn't a qualifying. You have to qualify to go, but anybody that wants to go, because it's a fairly new program. Um, anybody that wanted to go, got to go and they placed very well. We're very proud of them. So uh, state fair or county fair, we had about five hundred static projects and about seven hundred and twenty-five animal projects. Our livestock sale brought in thirty-seven thousand dollars more than it did the previous year with about fifteen kids less. So we're very happy with those results. Our numbers were down, um, across the board. Um, and I know we had two families that usually bring a large number of animals that had, uh, life happen. So those did not happen. Um, state fair, I took twenty-two static projects and we had six animal projects that competed and we had lots of, uh, blue ribbons. I told you about our state ambassador. Um, we had quite a few kids that went to state fall shoot, which was the first weekend in September. And you can see there, there are ones that qualified. They'll go to the Nebraska in June of next year. Um, this is our last month of our four H year. We'll be getting things updated, um, and turned over to start the new year. Uh, that was our last count for enrollment, um, and all of our extension activities of calls and visits and all that kind of stuff. I've learned how to test, uh, millet. That was fun. Now, I know I didn't know what millet was, so I'm learning lots, having lots of fun. Any questions? And then I did include some pictures of our, all of our activities, um, over the summer. So anything else?
They, I might have, they had eleven hundred people at the, uh, meal on Thursday. Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a really good showing. All right, thank you.
Okay, I am speaking publicly. I am in the public with that to address the board. And we will close that. How about I am speaking commissioner?
I would just highlight the fact that this city of Meade and, uh, economic development. Amber Harvard, you had a grant, you study tourism in Meade and the possibility to that. It was a pretty big deal and, and credit to Amber for figuring that out.
Anything else? Over fourteen, we're going to need.
Over fourteen, get another, another long break in there.
Yeah.
Well, if we're not going to speak at once, I will make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. I'm going to stop recording.